City Council Budget and Finance Committee, I'm the Chair, Councilor Mark LaPlante. Attending tonight's meeting is voting members, Council President Kendros Vasquez and Brian Depeña. Out sick today, and I wish the member very well, is Dave Abdu. Dave, hope you get better soon. I hope to see you back with us. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have some minutes to get approved. We have the minutes from September 27th and August 23rd. Is there a motion and September 13th? Is there a motion to approve those three sets of minutes?
So move.
If they're made and seconded, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Tonight, a light agenda, it looks like. We'll go in order. Document 33317, the Office of Planning and Development, acceptance of 207 Morrison Street, Parcel 1, a cleanup grant for $200,000, put on the City Council Agenda by Abel Vargas, the Business and Economic Development Director. Hello, Mr. Vargas.
Good evening, councilors, thanks for having me.
You're welcome.
So I'll just talk a little bit about the grant, Abel Vargas, 6 and Hebo Street, Lawrence, Mass. So I'll talk a little bit about the grant, I'm sure all of you are familiar with the old Tom Morello site, 207 Morrison Street in Prospect Hill. The site has long been abandoned and known to have different levels of contamination. The city took ownership of that property in May of 2015 with the intent to pursue funding to do some cleanup on that site. At this point, the city has been working with DEP and with, not so much with DEP, more with EPA, with EPA to identify opportunities to fund it, to fund the cleanup, and we've been able to secure funding of $200,000, the first grant, right, $200,000? That's the one we're looking at now?
Yeah, we're talking about the first one, which is...
$200,000?
Two hundred...
So the $200,000 grant will be used to clean up the front portion of the lot, to make it so that it's ready for development, sometime in the future. Mr. Chairman, I know what you're worried about. The actual funding for this project, we've worked with DEP as a consultant, I guess, for lack of a better word, providing us with guidance, but the funding is actually just coming from EPA for this grant.
So is there a... This is the same, both 333 and 334 are for the same address. I hear this.
That's correct. They're subdivided into two parcels, parcel one and parcel two.
Two different EPA grants.
Correct.
Mr. President.
Good evening, Director Vargas.
Good evening.
So it says EPA agrees to cost share 100% of the cost, which means that there's no matching grants or funds that the city has to come up with.
There is no matching requirement, we got a waiver for that because of our... You're just got a waiver for the match portion.
Wonderful. Why did we subdivide the parcels? So assessment and cleanup, was that a requirement of the funding?
No, so the reason why we subdivided the parcel was because of one portion of it was very dirty and the other one was less dirty, and we thought it was advantageous to break them up into two parcels, and one of them is prompted for cleanup because we could clean it up with the $200,000. The back portion, it's a lot dirtier and we won't be able to do it with the $200,000. So we applied for what's called a site-specific assessment grant. What that will allow us to do is do some more honed-in assessment and hopefully reduce the cost of total cleanup after we do that assessment.
Once the funds are received tonight, approved or sent to the full council tonight, if that's the consideration by the committee, when will we begin to see the cleanup effort take place?
So we are beginning the RFP process now, we're in the process of after actually drafting the RFP. So once we get that, we hope to get it out sometime in, you know, the middle of December or something along those lines, and hopefully have someone on board by late January is what we're hoping for.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any further questions. Motion to send up to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? So, I know that when we look at the city and we think about major economic areas, development areas, this is always near the top of the list. That, last night Housing Committee, we talked about Meramec paper being a big unutilized section showcase area, of course, my area is a big section. This is a significant section off of 495, and so it just seems like this thing's been kicking around for like years. And I don't even know, is there, are we seeing the goal line anywhere? Is it, I mean, how far? I mean, I'm talking big picture here. Trying to get a sense as to where we are in this process.
Yeah, I think, you know, for a long time, the city has not wanted to take that step just because of all of the unknowns. Back in 2015, we were able to secure funding to do the assessment, the initial assessment, and that gave us the confidence to move forward with the acquisition of the property. As you know, 1.4, I think, or 1.5 million dollars was due in back taxes, and we foreclosed on them for that amount. So I think, you know, for us to be able to move forward and be productive, we have to take steps that it's likely to take two, three, four, five years, but in order to get there, we have to start. So this initial phase, not the initial phase, but it's an early phase, is going to help us better position ourselves to market the property, because once you take away unknowns from the marketplace, people are more willing to take the step forward. And what's happened in that location for too long is that there's been too many unknowns. And through this process, we hope to remove some of those, and once we get closer to pad-ready or development-ready, we'll move towards marketing and hopefully selling the property at some date in the future.
Basic question, just confirming, we do own the Tom Morello site now?
We do own the Tom Morello site. As of May of 2015.
Okay, so no further questions, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Relatedly, 33417, again, Tom Morello site, this is a acceptance of a parcel two assessment from EPA, acceptance of the grant of $350,000, Mr. Vargas.
So this is in concert with the previous grant, so we subdivided one 2.6 acre lot and an 11.4 acre lot. The 11.4 acre lot will undergo assessment of the parcel, again, to get a better sense of what the total cleanup cost for that section will be, and once we go through that process, next year, we'll be in a position to apply for cleanup grants through EPA like we did for the front parcel.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to send it up to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion's been made and it's been seconded, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Vargas. We'll see you next Tuesday? Next Tuesday?
Yes.
For council.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just want to make sure. The next item is under Table New Business. Can I take, can I get a motion, please, and take document 325, 326 and block off the table for discussion?
So move.
Motion made. Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Councilors, as you recall during our last meeting, this was a petition by Mr. Aguiar, who was looking on behalf of himself for one property at 255 High Street, and then on behalf of his wife Maria at 45 Oakwood Ave, to enter into a tax payment plan. He owes money to the city, and he discussed with us at the meeting that he's petitioning us to go ahead and to, petitioning us to go ahead and to have us approve or endorse such a plan. This, as you recall, councilors, this was a unique proposal, a unique request, something that, in the course of at least my knowledge, being on the council for about 10 or 12 years, never remember having seen. Usually this is something done at the administrative process, the administration, through the tax collector's office. So tonight, we have here, I believe, Mr. Aguiar, and is that Maria that's with you, sir?
Yes.
And his wife?
Yes.
Mrs. Aguiar, thank you. And I believe we have representatives from the city tax collector's office and the city attorney's office here to give us some guidance as to how we should proceed with such a unique request. So, there is the, I set the table. I think we're all clear, we understand the request, right, from the last meeting?
Yes.
So we don't need to rehash that, I think we know where we are. So let me invite now the other side, is the city side. So could someone from the city give some information to the council as to the city's position on this, as to why we're dealing with this and guidance as to whether or not the council has the authority to deal with this?
Good evening, councilors, Brian Corrigan, Assistant City Attorney. This is a, this is a, well, this is a case that has, there are some themes, some undercurrent themes running through this case that run through the case you just heard, that ran through the cases that we discussed last night at Housing Committee involving problematic tax lien properties. This is a case in which Mr. and Mrs. Aguiar owe the city a lot of money in real estate taxes. I'm not going to get into the background and what got them into that position. I'm more than happy to have them discuss the matter with the city, but the fact of the matter is, Mr. and Mrs. Aguiar own a number of properties and they owe the city over $50,000 in back taxes combined. Now that's some properties owned by Mr. Aguiar, some owned by Mrs. Aguiar, some owned by entities that are wholly owned by Mr. or Mrs. Aguiar. They're Aguiar properties. Massachusetts law authorizes municipalities to basically deny, revoke, or suspend licenses and permits for failure to pay municipal taxes. And the city has adopted an ordinance that basically mirrors General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 57, and basically authorizes the tax collector in this case to refuse to sign off on a building permit for an applicant who owes the city property tax. In this particular case, there's been a lot of back and forth. I've had multiple discussions with Mr. Aguiar, I've met with Mr. and Mrs. Aguiar, I've talked to their attorney several times, we've had communications back and forth. The disconnect in this case, I think, seems to be that the Aguiars don't understand that what we're looking at is the big picture here. It's a lot of money owed to the city, we have a major problem with tax collection and delinquent taxpayers. It impacts everything that we do here in the city, as you well know, I don't need to grandstand on that issue. They want us to basically overlook all of these things and let them just enter into a payment plan that they deem appropriate. They're just going to pay us what they think they can pay us, a small down payment, and then just pay us over time. What I've suggested to Mr. and Mrs. Aguiar is, what they really ought to do here, what they can do very easily, is take one of these properties that they own, that has some equity, sell it, and use the proceeds of that to pay off the city and clean up all their tax mess. Then they don't have this issue with the city treasurer doing her job and trying to collect tax by taking advantage of this ordinance that basically mirrors the state law. So this is the issue that we have. This is not a case, I don't know what you heard last meeting, I was not here and I did not get a chance to watch it online. I don't know if Mr. and Mrs. Aguiar feel like they're being targeted here for some reason. There's a lot that's gone on behind the scenes in this case that I don't want to get into. I will simply say that they owe a lot of money to the city, we just want them to pay their taxes. This mechanism of denying a building permit is one of the strongest tools that the tax collector has in her efforts to try to resolve a major problem, which is delinquent tax payment. Mr. Aguiar and Mrs. Aguiar came in and sought a building permit to renovate one of their properties, and the tax collector refused to sign off on the permit. Here we are tonight, they think that they should be allowed to simply pay what they want to pay, the city feels that they need to resolve their big-picture tax issues, you know, forthwith, and they have the mechanism to do that. We don't want to just let them pay a little bit over time. The city just can't afford to let everybody do something like that. So, that's where we stand. The, you know, I'd like to try to work with them. I really would like to try to work with them, but I think the best thing for them to do really is to take one of their properties, put it on the market. Mrs. Aguiar is a real estate agent, sell one of the properties that has equity in it, and just pay off the city, resolve all these problems, and then they can take the other properties and just do what they want to do with them without having this problem hanging over their heads.
Can I ask you a question? Because I think we get the gist of what you're suggesting here. So the very first question, I think, I need to ask is, our authority? So, I read, whoever presented to me, maybe it was Mr. Aguiar or I think it was probably him, 5.04.080, which deals with the denial, revocation, suspension of a license, and the ability for us as a legislative body to over, essentially to, not overstep, but go ahead and then...
Yeah.
Allow them to have the permit if we so choose. If they got denied a permit, we can go ahead, or license, we can go ahead and overstep that and allow them to have a permit, right? So my question is, I get the idea regarding the permit and the license and our authority. What I don't understand, and it doesn't speak to it as far as I could read, that we, the city council, can allow for a payment plan. That's not a license, that's not a permit, it's a payment plan. I don't see where we have the authority to say, if the city says no payment plan, it's not a license, it's not a permit, it's a payment plan, where we get involved in a payment plan. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, no, I think it's very simple. The city council does not have the authority under the ordinance or the statute to do that. What Section D of our ordinance says is that the city council may waive such denial, suspension, or revocation if it finds there is no direct or indirect business interest by the property owner or members of his immediate family in the business or activity conducted in or on said property. Okay, so if you think about that, that would apply, that doesn't apply to this case, okay? What we're talking about here are rental, residential rental properties. We're not talking about a business that's being prevented from operating through no fault of its own because the property owner is behind on the taxes. I think that's where that Section D, which is the only reference to the city council having authority to take any action, would apply, is where there's a business being operated in a property that has delinquent taxes and there's been some sort of a denial, suspension, or revocation of a license. In this case, we're talking about residential rental property, all owned by Mr. or Mrs. Aguiar or one of their entities, and so we don't have any provision in the law that allows the council basically to tell the tax collector or the mayor's office or my office to not try to enforce the powers that we have to collect tax, and this is what we're trying to do here.
So just so, let me take it to it's an absurd level. If the Aguiars decided they wanted to get a dog license at the city clerk's office, and they did not get the license, it's a license, and for whatever reason, the clerk says, no, we're not, maybe it's a different dog, it didn't have the right specification, maybe it's too many, whatever the reasons were, they would come to the council, go, we were denied this license, we need you to go ahead and overrule that license permit denial.
Right.
That's where we get ourselves in, and we say, yes, Spot and Tigger can get their license to the city, right? So that's where we go.
Right.
But in this particular case, we're not talking about a permit, we're not talking about a license at any level, we're talking about a payment plan, which seems to me as though purely in the jurisdiction of the tax collector's office through your advice and counsel in the city attorney's office, but it doesn't, I don't know why it rises to our level here when I don't think we have the authority or the authority to make this decision. So I, that's, I mean, unless I'm seeing something wrong, if you agree with me, say the yes. Am I understanding this correctly? Yes or no? That's a yes or no question. Am I understanding this correctly, that we don't have the authority on this?
That's right.
Okay, that's the answer is yes.
We're on the same page.
Okay.
Yeah.
My, for me, the conversation ends there, for me, but...
Other councilors may have a question or a comment, I don't know.
So I don't even know why it's, well, I think we weren't aware of where our authority was, this is probably why it's before us right now on this committee and going through it. I don't know if you want to make a motion at this point, or there's any more questions we have? Do you want to, I think our options, we can continue this discussion. For me, I'm satisfied, I don't need to discuss this further. Maybe you do, councilors, but we need to either deny or withdraw, so without a recommendation, something. I can't make a motion.
I don't understand for one reason, is the city council don't have power from taking any decision. You send Mr. Aguilera to the city council? That's, that's how I understand it.
That's a good question.
If you don't have the power for one reason, you send it, Mr. Aguilera, come to the city council.
Yeah.
Because you know, you're the lawyer, you know the city council don't have the power.
Yeah.
Lose time. I think tonight, everybody lose time.
Yeah, listen, counselor, again, I've had so many conversations with, particularly with Mr. Aguiar and Mrs. Aguiar, and they have repeatedly told me that we are, the city is wrong, that we're violating the law, that they have friends on the council, that, you know, what we're doing is wrong, that they're going to come here and that the council's going to tell us what to do. I'm here basically to tell you what we're doing, that what we're doing, in my opinion, is in the best interest of the city. What I have explained to Mr. and Mrs. Aguiar about the law and why we are not going to let them do what they want to do, and why I think that what they need to do is try to sell one of their properties and pay the city off and move on. But, you know, I'm not their lawyer, they have a lawyer, I didn't give them legal advice on what to do. They won't accept no for an answer, or they won't take the one piece of advice that I've given to them, which is to sell one of their properties and use the proceeds to pay off all the back tax on all the other properties. They don't want to do that. They just want to be able to do what they want to do and work on the properties they want to work on and let this tax bill just keep accruing and not being paid, and I don't think they should be able to do it. The ordinance and the statute gives the tax collector the right not to sign off.
I have a question for her.
Yeah, and you know what? If they, and I've talked to their attorney about this.
No.
They can go right next door to the Superior Court and ask the judge to interpret our ordinance and tell the city whether they want to, whether they want to do that.
Okay, Mr. Corrigan.
Hi.
I have a simple question.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Sure, Kelly Oakes, Treasurer Collector.
Thank you.
This is the first time you have that situation?
Is it the first time I've had this situation? No, where somebody comes in looking for a permit and is denied the permit? No, no, it's not the first time, and it's not the first time that we've, you know, decided not to grant a payment plan either.
What are you doing in another case? What decision you take in another case?
I'm sorry, what is this?
What is, what decision you take when you receive another case? Because I think you receive the same case maybe every week or every day, maybe. Because I remember a couple of years ago, I have a bad situation, economic situation is not good in my life, and when I fill out a paper for make a deal to the city, I don't have any problem. Nobody told me, you need to go to the city council. The person in your office, he did everything, and simple. The office told me how many I should pay every month, and that's it. I think that's not complicated.
Mm-hmm.
Now it's more complicated because you bring the case to the city council, and the lawyer right now said, the city council don't have any power for doing nothing. I think it's a lose time.
Do you have a question, Mr.?
No, I don't have a question, but...
On that, okay. Thank you. Okay. All right. So the question remains then, is what does the committee wish to do? I suggest perhaps a withdrawal, send up without a recommendation, we have to hash this out of the full council again.
I don't understand, again, for what? Because I don't understand for what's precedent, because the city attorney said right now, the city council don't have any power.
Right.
In the future, the case come back to the city council for what? Don't have power.
Sure. My recommendation would be, if we were to ever get something like this again, then maybe, you know, we've talked to the council president, now that we've gone through this and we understand more about this issue, perhaps the council president would say, we don't have any jurisdiction over this. Putting it on the, it would be worthless to put on the agenda. We shouldn't be putting it on the agenda if we have no jurisdiction, and the council president would have to make that decision. But now that we've gone through this process at this public hearing, meeting, excuse me, second time now, now I think we, we didn't know the answers the first time, right? So now we have the answers, so now we can, if this were to happen again, where someone says, we want the city council to give us a payment plan, we're going to say, no, we can't do that. Don't bring it to us, we can't do it. Do they? As another legal question, Mr. Corrigan, do they have any recourse? Can they take the city to court? If they wish to say that somehow they, we've been unlawful or unfair, or we've used our discretion and our power for not providing them a payment plan, or just purely discretion, we can just do it, we be the city?
Yeah, they could. They could go right next door to Superior Court and file a declaratory judgment action and have a judge very quickly interpret our ordinance to say whether they're entitled to a payment plan or not. I don't know why they would waste their time doing that when they have a very, there's a very simple solution, and I don't know why they just don't want to do it. They own multiple properties, find, just pick one that has some equity in it and pay off the city. I don't know how, you know, they're trying to make us look like the bad guys here. You can, you know, you can laugh, Mrs. Aguiar, but you owe the city a lot of money, and it's about time that they just pay us. So, so yes, they can take us to court, and if a judge says that the city, you know, is obligated to provide them with some sort of a payment plan, then we would at that point do it. But at this point in time, you know, I've heard nothing about any sort of a fair payment plan that gets the city paid off on all of this tax within a reasonable period of time. They just want to focus on one property at a time, they say that... They say that, well, if Mr. Agio owns this property, the other property's owned by Mrs. Agio or some LLC or some trust doesn't apply, and that's just not the way the city interprets it. We, we look and, we're looking at the entire portfolio of Agio properties. They owe us a lot of money and we just want them to pay us. That's it.
I can't make a motion.
Mr. Sheriff, given the fact that this is out of the jurisdiction of the city council, I'd like to make a motion to be sent to the full council for withdrawal.
There's a motion made.
Second.
And there's a second. Is there any further discussion? Here and then I'll call the question, and all in favor say aye. And, and by the way, I just want to make sure, are we clear? Are we talking about both items or one item? 325 and 326?
They were taken as a block?
We took it off the table as a block. Now, we can certainly, yeah, we can certainly do it as a block, or you want to say...
Yeah, we'll do it as a block, yeah.
So, it's for both, both items. Motion's, we agree? Motion's been made and second, all in favor say aye.
So, both as a block?
You want them to speak first?
Yes.
I'm not gonna call the question until, as a courtesy to Mrs. Aguilo. Go ahead.
Good night. My name is Ana Maria Aguilo, and I'm a real estate broker. I still have my license. This is a situation that have been happening for a long time, that have been affecting us a lot as a family, because this is about family. Those property are not just property. This is the property that made me pay my bills, made me pay my food, and put school and supply for my children's. I have been living in this property, in this city for seventeen years almost. I have been paying my taxes, always I have been paying my taxes. My question for that guy, he's saying that this no, you don't have authority, he doesn't know why we're here. This is a bullying, because he sent us here. He sent us here. He told us to come up in front of you. We didn't say anything to him. That was his advice, because I don't know for what reason he want to see us here. Bullying. That what the city have been doing to us for, why? He want, he say, "I don't want to talk about the background, you can talk about the background." You can check me. In the first, in the, give me one second. He can check my backgrounds in the first day that I came to this, this country, until right now. That's something when I tell him. Yes, I haven't had several conversation with him, and he might be doing something. On the city, everybody have the right to be treated equally. You don't need to treat me differently. I'm not asking him to avoid my taxes. I asking the city and not him, because they don't owe the city. They need to understand that is rulers, I think, in this city's field, okay? I'm asking for a payment plan that I know the only person that have been asking about it. I know the only person who have a payment plan. I know the only person have a financial problem, and everybody know that, okay? He had no right to tell me to sell my property to less to pay the bill, because, to pay the, the taxes, because if I sell it for less, I cannot even pay the other taxes from the other property. I need, I have the right to take my entire equity in my house. Nobody gonna tell me for how much I need to sell, less than the market price, just because the city want to? He said that he doing something on the best of the city. The best of the city is to help the people to move forward with any property. We are a development. You want to know how many property we put it to running? That was just, we, a lot of garbage and trash. I have been doing that for thirteen years. I haven't have any problem. I don't have any problem with other, other, you know, people on the city here for, he taking advantage of our situation, and I know, I don't owe a million dollar. I owe taxes from this year. I don't owe taxes for 2004, 2000, no. I owe taxes from this year, and he's missing the corporation, he's missing me. We are different. You can not miss everything, because if he have a property on this, his name, he owe taxes, he owe the taxes. I don't owe the taxes. Even though we married, we are two different people, okay? It doesn't mean if I have the money, I don't want to pay, or he say, they have, he saying that I have plenty equity. Yes, I have plenty equity, but I need to fix the house to get the equity. Nobody, you don't want to have equity if you don't fix the house. You don't want the city to lose nice. You're stopping the development. We are the developer. You are stopping me. I've been stopped for a long time, trying to relax and be nice, relax and be nice, and don't, you know, I don't want to go to court, let me go do, do this and this. Nothing works, because they don't want to do it. It's simple, like this. He sent us here to bullying us. That's a bullying. We respectful. You are not ethic. You are nothing. Sorry. But, but I need to say, how you send me to a play and then you come over here in front of me and say, "Oh, you, they don't have authority, you send me here." It doesn't have, what do you think? Because probably I don't speak English the way that he speak, are stupid? No, I'm not. And they know that I'm not stupid, because they have been targeting me. Yes, yeah, the city have been targeting me and targeting my family, my children for a long time, okay? And I have been trying to relax. You know why? Because I have two children, ten and eleven, that I need to take care, but I have enough. I have been receiving a lot of aggravation from the city. I want to say the city, because the people here represent the city. So, I'm not asking you to avoid my taxes. I'm not asking you to make me pay less. I'm not asking you for a favor. I'm asking you for my civil rights, civil rights. That person, that gentleman was trying to stop one of myself, or the, my property that was, was on sale. He called the attorney and said, "Oh, you need to pay all the taxes that you owe." The attorney said, "No, I know the tax collection, I want to pay the taxes for the specific property that she's selling." He said that I don't want, I want to do and pay the amount that I want. No, I just want a payment plan like any other person in that city that pay taxes, because I don't owe taxes for ten year or fifteen year, I owe taxes for this year, and the next year that's already running, okay? What I owe is eight thousand dollar, and I'm asking him, "Give me a payment plan." My question for, for the city is, when people get a stop with property, how you help the people? How, how people, you help the people, the citizens to, to move forward? That's what you want, move forward? You don't want people to move forward, what do you want? That's my question for that gentleman. What do you want? What, you representing the city?
Mrs. Aguilo, you're directing it to us. The comments are to us. I understand you're frustrated. I, I can hear the, we can hear the anger, but you have to talk to us. This is not an opportunity to go back and forth with anybody else in the audience.
Okay, okay. He give me the opportunity. Thank you. That's the point. How? The city need to have something when people get stuck in, in property. I want to pay, I cannot sell, to be able to sell, he know more than me, because he's an attorney. When you selling a property, what mean for the, for the city? That mean money for you, because I'm gonna have to pay the taxes that I owe. And that is a secret property, yes. This is the property that I owe money. I'm not selling the property that I know, I'm selling the property where I owe money, eight thousand. If I have the money, do you think they're gonna take my time, time of my family, time of my children to be here? Begging for a permit to move forward? That is, that is embarrassing. That is embarrassing for me. I know that kind of people, and a hard worker, and have been demonstrated here for a long time, because everybody know me in the city. There's few people that pretending they don't know me. That's the problem. Okay? I'm not asking you for a favor, I'm asking for my civil rights. That's what I'm asking here. Payment plan, like I can show you more than a hundred people that have payment plan here. What is the difference? Why I cannot get a payment plan? What is the difference? Do I came for an alien or what? No. Everybody need to be treated equal here. That's the point here. If he know you don't have the authority, he knows to want to send you, send us here. Maybe he send me here because he think that I'm more like, no, I know, I'm too smart. Thank you.
Motion's been made and second, and all in favor say aye.
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 And opposed, no. The ayes have it. This is going to the full council with a recommendation to withdraw at the next full city council meeting. Is there anything else on the agenda this evening that the councils want to take up? If not, I want to take a motion to adjourn.
So, move?
Motion made.
Second.
And second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it.